Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome everyone to the Board of Ed regular meeting. This is January 23rd, 2024. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Middleton. Trustee Jenga. Trustee Gail. Trustee Lancy. Trustee White. Trustee Saunders. VP Kelly. And President Kerwin. We have a call. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at the meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization if any you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Copeland-Bay.
Good evening. My appellation is Nikisha Copeland-Bay. I'm a building representative at Grimes Elementary School. So greetings to all board, parents, any students here, teachers, TAs. Definitely MVFT. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight to focus on two points that are affecting morale of MVFT membership. Just two, for tonight. One, mental health, specifically sick days. We are given a certain number of days per year. Membership should not fear, worry, or have anxiety about taking sick days. Sick days should be taken by membership when needed, but some are not because we get memos and we have to have meetings. The guilt sets in, morale drops. My second point, substitutes. Classes are often split because subs are not signing up or they're not showing up. Results, workload increase. Our planned day sometimes needs to be adjusted. Morale drops. So please just keep just these two points in mind, that we are not being appreciated or compensated. Please keep this in mind when you are not meeting our demands for a new contract. Thank you.
Tom Keller.
Thomas Keller, 12 Pasadena Place, 10552. I'm with the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers, but my wife, who's retired about five years, was a member from Grimes. Diane Keller, for your information. Okay, I'm here for primarily the calendar, which is going to be voted upon tonight. When I saw last fall that Indigenous Peoples' Day was why there was no school on October 9th rather than Columbus Day, I said, Columbus Day is a national holiday. If you want to do Indigenous Peoples' Day, do it some other day, but it's not a federal holiday. I looked at the calendar on the website, and making the same mistake this year. And I was told last fall that, oh, Bosse's produces this. Okay, they probably propose it. Every district sets their own calendar. I'll give you an example. My wife, she tutors homeless kids in Coachmen up in White Plains. She also tutors Scorsese kids. They get two weeks off at Christmas time, first week in January, Christmas or New Year's. Why? Because they have a lot of Japanese people who go to Japan, and one week is not enough. So don't tell me that you're tied in with Bosse's and you can't make any adjustments. How about the sick days, five to 10? No. Indigenous Peoples' Day. And by the way, Native American sounds better than Indigenous Peoples' Day. Okay, I'm on the Budget Committee, by the way. We're talking about a tax increase for next year? We've got to be very productive and efficient about this. We have 15 members of corporate staff, if you go on the website. Last year was 10. We're paying two superintendents. Maybe we need a buyout. Let's see, what else? All right. Okay, there's a lot of things that can be done to improve efficiency. If somebody leaves and their job can be done by somebody else, let's do it. Also, the workday. I don't like 35-hour weeks. This is a 35-hour week, and you're not being discriminated against. I told the city this during the budget hearings in November and December. They're 8:30 to 4:30, you're 8 to 4. How about when you sign contracts with CSEA and the others? That it's 8 to 5, 8:30 to 5:30, something like that. The private sector, it's a 40-hour week. Why not the non-private sector? Also, this survey, which is on the website, about whether we want to change the grade configuration. I saw that the Fleetwood Neighborhood Association, run by Michael Giustino, husband of Eileen Giustino, the president of the foundation. I got an email, because I'm on the email list, a couple of weeks ago. What was behind that? Did the district ask them to send it out to their email list? Because it is on the website. Is it because Eileen is president of the Educational Foundation? I need some answers to this. And the City Council of Mount Vernon, when you bring up a point, they answer it. And I like the same thing from these trustees. Thank you.
John Favre.
John Favre, 780 Gramerton Avenue, Mount Vernon. Trustees, any political people that are in here, or you teachers, I'm not familiar with the school board, but I only heard this afternoon that you intend to eliminate Christopher Columbus Day in place of Indigenous Day. There are 365 days in the year. Why are we picking on Christopher Columbus? There are only 40 days during the year that we have commemorative days or holidays. That leaves a whole bunch of other days that you could have called Indigenous. And why even Indigenous? Are we afraid to call them Native Americans? They were here, then it's ruled over ever since the public had taken charge of our government. It's crazy. You people don't have anything better to do with today's current events than you've got to pick on an issue that's 500 years old? He was a merchant. He wasn't a slave owner. Damn it, and you know, why is everything we do politically today going in the wrong direction? Now, I argued the issue of the ROTC program that was in here a few years back. You got rid of that. That's leadership for the youth that was in this here school. I heard 31 of them come up to this here podium and asked to keep that program intact, yet it was erased. Why? A couple of bucks here and there. But the superintendent can get a nice salary increase, political members can get a nice increase to their expense account, but the kids don't count? Do you people realize how low the morale of the children in this city is? 15 years I'm working to try and get a memorial park for the veterans, the men and women who sacrificed their lives so we can have the peace and the freedom to talk like I'm talking here tonight, to talk about the jobs that we all have, the quality of life that we have. Does that mean nothing to you people? You're in charge of this here. You've got the right to look at things crossways. Why are you picking on Christopher Columbus? Can you give me an answer? I'll shut up for 30 seconds. Give me an answer. Tell me why Christopher Columbus has to be replaced by Indigenous. Is America First Fusion the next one on the list? I want an answer. Can I get something? There's a whole bunch of you up there. You all voted on this last year to make the change in the calendar? If that goes into this year's calendar, I will be on everybody's butt each and every meeting. I'll be on this situation like State Department.
Did you want me to answer?
Yes, I want an answer.
Right, so on October 5th, this was what was on the website.
October 14th is the Columbus Day.
October 5th, 2023. Although the federal holiday is on the second Monday in October, it is still a federal holiday officially. However, President Biden has, for the past two years, also proclaimed it Indigenous Peoples' Day, as have dozens of states and localities around the country. So that's why it's changed.
Well, if you want to hand your hat on what President Biden is doing, let's take a look at the southern border. Is that correct? Now, let's not get into it politically, because I could do that too. I'm arguing one particular issue. Out of 365 days, why was Christopher Columbus eliminated? That's a question. I don't give a damn whether it was Obama, or Biden, or anybody else. I'd like to know why. Is this a racial issue? Why was Christopher Columbus picked on?
So, Mr. Favre, the superintendent, acting superintendent, has responded.
You'll hear from me again. If this here goes through, I'll be back.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Mr. Keith McCall.
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent, cabinet members, and my fellow MVFT brothers and sisters. As you can see, we are in the house this evening for one purpose only. That is to states of the community, to the board, to the trustees, and everyone else, that it has been a year and a half without a collective bargaining agreement. We are here to say that we need a contract now. The role of our members is critical. Research shows that the teacher is the most significant factor in determining the success of a student. So it doesn't matter what programs you have, if you don't have an effective teacher in front of the students, then that program will not be a success for the child. We also have our teaching assistants. Our teaching assistants, who show up every single day, they provide support for the teacher, for the students, and many of our TAs are actually teaching classes as well. We have our security personnel, who keeps everyone safe. All of these individuals stand on the front lines every single day to make sure that this school district runs smoothly. We are the MVFT, and as stated previously, we have been without an agreement since June of 2022. It is now 2024, and once again, we want a contract sooner rather than later. Other districts. Other districts in our area have already ratified collective bargaining agreements. We have New York City, Yonkers, we have Portchester, Pete's Gill, Norah Cell. Why not the MVFT? This evening, I stand before you, as well as my fellow colleagues, and we stand in front of the board, we stand in front of the superintendent, and the community, to say that we are serious about ratifying a contract, and we will be here every single meeting until that is done. Not having a collective bargaining agreement is affecting our staff. It's affecting recruitment and retention. It lowers overall staff morale. So I have a question for everyone. Does the school district value the people who are on the front lines when it comes to educating our students? We need to have salaries and benefits that are competitive. If not, people will look elsewhere instead of coming to Mount Vernon, and our students deserve the best. In conclusion, MVFT members, we're committed to our students. When is the school district going to be committed to us? We're standing here, united, saying to everyone, we need a fair and equitable contract, and we need it right now. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mark Stuckey.
Good evening, Federation of Teachers. I'm here because I wanted to talk about an issue of giving honor to those who do work here in this district. A colleague of mine, he's not here. You can hear him? How's that? A colleague of mine was, I asked him to come. He's the plumber of this district. And this young man has done great work and saved this district a lot of money. Today, he wind up detecting, well, the detection of a leak that took place in one of our schools went from the basement in a crawl space all the way up to the third floor in Graham School. And I wanted him to come, so this way he can get his just due, so everybody can see who the young man is by the name of Alex, who winds up going to the little cubbyholes in this district as a plumber, going clean, come out dirty, to save this district thousands of dollars. What needed to take place in this district is you needed to honor and give respect to those who wind up doing their service. A week ago, no, I'm sorry, on the 22nd of December, I was painting the turf room, and a grievance came in saying, I'm doing all this overtime, and the job, the project came to a stop. I stopped the project. The project was going to cost this district approximately, what, $30,000 to paint. We had paint in this district. We used the paint. The colors, maroon and gold. I mixed the colors up myself, the maroon and the gold, to fit our logo. My intentions are to have a young man who winds up graduating, and I was speaking to the superintendent about this, to get her blessings, to have this young man come back and paint a logo on that wall down there. With the logo, it would be the logo, center wall, three nights on the left, three nights on the right, showing the greatness, the power that Mount Vernon really do have. So I'm asking for the board's blessing to have this young man come in, to paint the logo, and to do the artwork in this room. We stopped the work, and I mean by we, those who was working with me because of the complaint. And I wind up passing, asking the supervisor, can we sit down and have a conversation, the one who put the complaint in on me? It didn't go through. It was denied. I meanwhile passed it over, gave up my position, and letting, saying, hey, look, I relinquished myself of painting it. Now, what winds up happening, I'd like to have a couple more minutes, please. What winds up happening, you just got finished finishing up that turf room. The ones who finished it up, I give them their props, who came in and finished off the ceiling. They only had two days to go. I primed, I painted all those walls down there. The ones who helped me was Mr. Regan and Ms. White. And everybody attacked them because of the overtime.
Mr. Stuckey, excuse me, could you not mention every names?
So what winds up happening is now, is these individuals who wind up coming out and wind up doing their service to save this money district, they need to be honored and grateful for what their services was. Last thing is, our teachers wind up doing a lot. Over the summer, I wind up having teachers come from the outside, New York City and whatnot, come in here to apply for a position, and next thing you know, they're gone. These teachers right here, they wind up standing up all the time to do what they have to do. What needs to take place is the contract needs to be signed, needs to be fulfilled with them. Not 1%, not a half a percent, 2%, not even 2%. Let's go 13.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey.
Okay, let's go 13.
Thank you.
An election.
Mr. Stuckey, thank you.
An election is coming up.
Excuse me.
In May.
Mr. Stuckey, thank you.
You can turn me off. An election is coming up in May, which determines how this board will wind up.
Your time has ended.
Okay, Federation, stand up. Come out. The Teachers' Federation is very large. You can get those signs one day on a Saturday. Hit the streets, and I guarantee you'll turn everything around.
That ends our public comments. We go right on to superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I want to briefly discuss the recent snow delay and two-hour delay, or snow day off and the two-hour delay. I want you to know, we will always attempt to decide early as possible when we're going to close schools. The decision to close school is not taken lightly. I am a part of a superintendent chain that discusses the closing of schools. In some cases, it is collaborative, a collaborative decision, as we keep an eye on the weather. We just want students to be safe. And of course, safety is our priority. We want students, staff, administrator, everyone, to be able to arrive on time and depart on time. I know there's some concerns in terms of when we make that decision. We make it as soon as possible, and we will always try to let you know in a timely manner. I want to thank Chef Cohen for the culinary class. They prepared dinner this evening. So I would like to, in addition to thanking Chef Cohen, she had 12 grade students prepare the dinner. One is Steffi Lovensky, Hawa Kadera, Crystal Lee Budai, and Gabby Bugata. We want to thank them so very much. In regards to the K8 school building configuration survey, which ends tomorrow, we've received numerous concerns about our current configuration. So we put a survey out that parents and all stakeholders can weigh in on whether we should continue with the K8 model, whether we should look at a K6, 7, 8th grade model. I am happy to say that many people have been responding. This is this decision that we want to be from the parents, from the community. And again, it's because we get so many concerns, and people tell us that they don't agree with the current model. So tomorrow's the last day of the survey. I ask that you weigh in, and we will review the response. The Mount Vernon City School District is hosting a high school showcase this Thursday, January 25th, at Mount Vernon High School. That will be from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and we're asking that all 8th grade students and their parents come in and learn about our high schools. Again, this is something that we do annually, and the principals enjoy discussing their schools. So please, join us that night. There's going to be two superintendent's reports this evening. The first one being by Dr. Jamal Doggett, and he is the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Curriculum Instruction and Administration, and he will be discussing the New York State Education Department's 2023, 2222, 23 grades, 3 to 8 ELA and math data. And then, Dr. Beverly Jones, Acting Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel, will discuss parent liaisons and the resource center. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'll wait. Thank you for staying for my presentation. All right, good evening again. Okay, so tonight I'll present, I'll be presenting the 2022, 2023 grades, 3 through 8 ELA and math data. I did the same presentation last year around this time, where I presented the 2021, 2022 data, and that was basically a baseline data, once everyone came back to school.
data, and that was basically a baseline data, once everyone came back to school, and we were basically resetting the direction that we were going, and that was basically paving the road to progress. So this year, I'm going to present the 2022, 2023 ELA data and math data to see the progress that we made within a year's time. Next slide. So before I do that, I do want to remind or reintroduce the district's achievement goals that we have each year. So the first one is for at least a 75% of our students performing accountability levels 1, 2, 3, and 4 on our assessments, and what that base goal basically sets is basically to significantly reduce the number of Level 1 students in our district, and our Level 1 students are the ones that are performing below grade level. So our goal is to significantly reduce that. We also want to increase by 3% each year our grades, 3 through 8 assessments and our region scores. Now, this information is taken directly from the state. The state deems a 3% increase incrementally each year as satisfactory, and please note that our New York State 3-8 assessments is tied into the teacher's APPR. These targets were established through collaboration with the union and district leadership and our alignment to the direction that we're trying to go. Next slide. So, before I get into the data, I would like to preface it by saying this, there is a story behind each school's data performance, meaning programming, new students to the testing grades, school performance, vacancies, and proficient students leaving the district, and opt-outs. All that impact the scores that lands our district. So without further ado, I am going to present the overall ELA scores, and then I'm going to go school by school to see if the goals were met for ELA and math. So the slide is 40 pages, but it's basically pictures. I'm going to be speaking to the numbers, so bear with me. The previous year, we had our overall proficiency rates were 39%, and we, for last year, we obtained a 3% increase, so our proficiency rate increased by 3% in ELA, which means we met our target goals. And as you can see, if you look at the data trends, the number of Level 2s and 3s and 4s has also increased to 74%. Now remember, I told you, our goal is to have 75% of our students in the Levels 2, 3, and 4 categories, so we're 1% away. We want to make sure we set that goal, we are moving in the right direction. So now, as I, next slide, please. You're going to see each individual school now, how they performed. So this is Benjamin Turner Middle School. They received a 31% proficiency rate, which was down 7%. Now again, there's many factors that make the data look the way it does, and we have though, we know that from the data meetings that we have with our principals, that paints a different picture. But right now, this is just black and white of the overall progress that our schools have been making over the past two years. Next slide, please. Parker School had a 12% proficiency rate increase in ELA scores from one year to the next. Denzel Washington, next slide, please. Some of their data for the 21, 22 school year was unverified on New York State website, so we're going to use our district data for this school. So it says that it's a 15% decrease, but that's because we use our local data, and if you go on the state website, for some reason, that 8th grade data is not there, which I can assume that's due to some testing irregularities. Next slide, please. Edward Williams. So if we look at Edward Williams, we see they had a 22% proficiency rate for both the years. Now, I just wanted to stop and just talk about Williams for one second. When you see a proficiency rate of zero, does it look like the school moved? No, am I correct? But if you look internally, the school has moved. Edward Williams was a pre-TSI school, which means they were targeted as a school of a need of improvement, which means the immediate plan is to reduce the amount of Level 1s. So if you look at Williams School, the levels of 2, 3, and 4 have went up 7%. So for that school, success looks differently, because that school had to focus on moving their Level 1s. So, and as a result of focus on that, that school is now in good standing. Graham School, 5% increase in proficiency rates from one year to the next, and up 4% in their students performing at Levels 2s, 3s, and 4s, and this is all for ELA. Grimes School, next slide, a 9% increase, and the Levels 2s, 3s, and 4s are going up, which means we are moving away from our Level 1s, and students are getting, moving through the spectrums and moving through the levels. So it's very important that we pay attention to the movement between the levels, specifically Levels 1 to Level 2. Next slide. Hamilton School, 2% increase. Next slide, please. Lincoln School, 59% to 57% with a 2% proficiency decrease, and as you move towards the 50% and 60% percentile in test scores, one of the things you have to watch out for is slippage. We have a lot of students that are high Level 2s or low Level 3s that can slip back to Level 2s. Mount Vernon Honor Academy, an 8% increase. Next slide, please. Leadership Academy, a 4% increase in ELA from one year to the next. Nelson Mandela Jose Zola Call for School had a 3% reduction, but again, they were cited as a school of need of improvement for their Ls. They focus on moving a specific amount of Ls in the Level 1 category, which resulted them getting on, off the list. So when it doesn't look like progress, it actually is, because the state is removing them from a school of a need of improvement to a school in good standing, and that does not happen without movement within the levels. Pennington, a 3% decrease in ELA and a 1% increase in their total number of students performing in Levels 2, 3, and 4. However, you can see that the majority of their students are above the set target for the district at 81% when the goal is 75%. So they do have some success, movement within the bands. Rebecca Turner Elementary School had a 14% reduction, and again, when you look at this, this also speaks to programming as well. Certain schools you already know are going to be earmarked for reductions based on the way that they are programmed. Trappagan School had a 1% increase, and they had a 1% increase in the number of students achieving Levels 2, 3, and 4. However, they are way above the goal of the 75% reduction in Level 1s. So some quick highlights, which I'm going to go through really quickly. Lincoln School outperformed the district and New York State average. Mount Vernon Honor Academy outperformed the district average and tied to New York State average. Leadership outperformed the district average. Nelson Mandela outperformed the district average as well as Pennington, Rebecca Turner, and Trappagan School outperformed the district in New York State and New York State in grades 3 through 8. So that concludes the ELA. I did write down some quick action steps for improvement for ELA, which are currently underway, which I'm not going to go into detail because I did present this in September, but we have the foundations year two, we have our data analysis, our MTSS, beginning of the year, middle of the year, iReady assessment, we have our MTSS, data is reviewed and analyzed. We also providing targeted support to our high Level 1s and high Level 2s. And we're also transitioning the K-1 students to the iReady platform to reduce the achievement gap prior to students entering 2nd grade. Now previously, as we all know, iReady starts, we district mandated it starts in 2nd grade. We have this software that we're paying for that's available to our K-1 students that has proven to close the achievement gap. So why wait to 2nd grade? Start them in kindergarten, kindergarten, so we can reduce it by the time they get to 2nd grade, because right now, they're practicing navigation, exploring the website, so you're going to see the middle of the year may not look the way it normally looks, that's because we're in transition. The goal is for this to show up year, two, two or three years from now, when they hit 3rd grade, there is no gap, and the scores just continue to move. So that's the thinking and the method behind what we're doing for the transitioning students to the K-1 platform. And we have our new literacy rollout, which I'm not going to get into because we did discuss that in ELA. Next slide, please. In January of last year, I took this slide from the same presentation that I presented to the board, because when I presented the same presentation last year, our math scores were so significantly low in the district that it was our priority. ELA is our priority, but as a former principal, it's very difficult to focus on both, so we focused on both. We put everything in math last year. So I just want to remind you of the improvement plan that Dr. Jagnand put together, the strategies is basically analyzing data to prove achievement, and if you want to look at anything, it's the second strategy in the middle, coherent lesson design, emphasis on problem-solving strategies, the concrete and pictorial and small group instruction. So those are the four things, four things that the district has used in math to close the achievement gap. So since I presented this in January, mid-year, when the scores were low at 24%, let's see what it resulted in. Next slide, please. In that one year, implementing that improvement plan, the scores went from 24% to 39%. That's a 15% increase in one year. So now I'm going to go through the schools, and you're going to see the improvements that the schools have made. Benjamin Turner Middle School had a 16% increase in proficiency rates, also a 23% increase in the students' performance at Levels 2s, 3s, and 4s. Next slide. Parker, a 17% increase in math from the previous year, and they increased the number of students performing at Levels 2, 3, and 4 by 19%. Denzel Washington had a 30% increase, and again, this, and this, again, there's some unverified data, you can clap for everything. An increase is an increase, and it's very difficult to obtain a 15% increase in one year. So that's the hard work of everybody, administration, the teachers. Any teachers here, clap for yourselves. I have a math teacher who's great right here, thank you for that. Edward Williams School, an 8% increase and a 16% increase in the students performing at Levels 2s, 3s, and 4s. Now again, students moving from Level 1 to Level 2, that's what we want, because what happens? Level 1s become Level 2s, Level 2s become? And Level 3s become? Exactly. And if you stay at Level 2, well, I don't know if I should say that, but if you stay at Level 2 and move out of Level 1, that's the priority right now for the district based on our data, so this way, we don't go back to schools in need of improvement. And then once you're in good standing, then you set those goals to start moving from 2s to high 2s to 3s. But right now, to get out of trouble, you have to focus on those Level 1s like Edward Williams did, because what can happen to you, you can get a 16% increase, a 20% increase, and still be a school in need of improvement because you have too many Level 1s. And people have to understand that. What happens is, oh, my school went up 20%, hey, hey, but guess what? You have too many Level 1s, you're not getting any points for those students, and it's being averaged into the denominator, and now you're, now you're a school in need of improvement with high scores. So you got to pay attention to what your data is telling you to move. So for example, we may want a certain school to move 10%, but they have to look at their data and say, I have to get these Level 1s to Level 2s first before I can get there. I did Williams, correct? Graham School, 13% increase and a 19% increase in our students performing at Levels 2, 3s, and 4s. Grimes, 18% increase and a 22% increase in students performing at Levels 2, 3s, and 4s from the previous year. Hamilton School, 20% increase and a 20% increase in the levels of students performing at Levels 2, 3s, and 4s. Lincoln School, a 6% increase and a 14% increase of our students performing at Levels 2, 3, and 4s. Honor Academy, again, 13% increase and a 16% increase in our Levels 2, 3s, and 4s. Leadership Academy, a 12% increase and a 14% increase in students performing at Levels 2, 3, and 4s. The district is moving, the plan is working. Nelson Mandela, 16% increase and a 10% increase in students performing at Levels 2, 3s, and 4s. We are eliminating our Level 1s, ladies and gentlemen. Pennington School, a 17% increase in proficiency rate from one year to the next, and a 20% increase in students performing at Levels 2, 3s, and 4s. Rebecca Turner Elementary School, a 10% increase and a 7% increase in students performing at Levels 2, 3s, and 4s. Trappagan School, a 13% increase of our students performing at proficiency rate and 8% of our students performing at Level 2, 3s, and 4s. Highlights in math, next slide, please. All schools are to be commended for their significant increases in student proficiency rates for math. So let's give them a round of applause for their hard work. Two more slides, and I'll take my seat. The action steps improvement for math, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So we are keeping some of the same strategies that we have, using our new systems, our new program, but before I conclude the presentation, go to the next slide, please. I just want to remind the district and the community of where we are overall academically in Mount Vernon with our programs, and I always like to use a change theory or change analysis to illustrate that. The importance of change, change is a process. So we have two new programs, we have our foundations year two, we have our new literacy rollout, we have a new math program, and we also have MTSS, which teachers are getting support on this year. So we have to do a lot of work in preparing the organization for the necessary changes, and right now, we're in that phase, and we're also in the changing phase. So when we're in the changing phase of an organization, it's trial and error, it's practice, it's new learning, so can be confusion, small wins here and there, growing pains because we're changing, that's the state that we're in right now as a district. So when you hear those complaints about the program and this, that's because it's new. We want to get through that period so we can get to the refreezing where we can sustain the new learning in the organization. We are not there yet. The presentation came down, Oscar. Okay, so this pretty much illustrates this change. We want to get to refreezing, we're not there yet, and I'm going to show another change slide, and this is basically Michael Fullland's process of change, it pretty much says the same thing, next slide. It pretty much says the same thing. Initiate implementation and institutionalize with where you want to achieve sustained change throughout the district. We're in the same place. Time to plan, practice, provide feedback, put in the right people in place. So we're in that phase right now where things can be ugly and feel ugly until we get it right and sustained, but as you can see, we are on the road to progress. Next slide. Academic progress to be continued, and thank you. I also want to, I did want to thank the teachers that were here and everybody, all the hard work that they've done. I have to give a special shout out to Ms. Rose, Dr. Jagnandin. I have to give a shout out to Parker School as well, because Parker School is the only school that had double-digit increases in ELA and math, so let's give them a round of applause as well. It's very difficult to focus on two subjects and to have double digits in both is to be commended. So again, thank you.
Dr. Doggett, could you please post this information on the website? Thank you. Any questions?
What is the graduation rate of the high school level?
Do you want to college? Maybe a prevent?
I can't go to college.
So, excuse me, so we want to thank the teachers and the principals and all the administrators. Superintendent, I thank you for everyone who hit the ground running to get these numbers or have our increase and have the kids learning. And yes, we are hoping that, and we know for sure that the kids will be reading and writing when they graduate from high schools. So again, thank you. On behalf of the board, we thank you. We would like to see next time that you present this presentation, that this percentile will be in the 50s and the 60s and the 70s and the 80s.
We're working on it.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you for your support.
Dr. Jones?
Okay, good night, board. Good night, my colleagues. Good night, teachers. Good night, community. I have the pleasure of working with an amazing group of ladies. We call them the parent, the parent liaisons, and they're with me tonight, and we are sharing with you some of the things that we do on a daily basis, so allow me, next slide. So allow me, next slide, please, allow me to introduce them and then get out of their way so they can do what they do best. Next slide, please. Okay, so tonight, we're going to spend a little time to introduce you to the team, give you a little peek into a day in the life of the parent liaison, of a parent liaison. And then we're going to look at five practice conditions for effective family and school partnerships. We're going to look at the Parent Resource Center, and we are going to look at some upcoming events, which we hope to see everybody at. Next slide, please. And here's the A Team. So the very first person, and I'm going from left to right, is Ms. Athena Dent-Aline. She's the Parent Resource Center Parent Liaison. She can be found in that room at STEAM just about every single day. And yes, please rise, wave to the lovely folks of Mount Vernon and the amazing board. All right, then we have Ms. Elizabeth Smith. She's at Benjamin Turner and Lincoln School. Right there, she's right there. Then we have Dardane, and I messed her last name up all the time, so I will just say Dardane. She'll give you the pronunciation for her last name. And she's at STEAM and Parker School. And then we have Maura. Where's Ms. Maura? All right? And you can hear, she's from Hamilton and Mount Vernon Leadership. Then we have Pamela. Where's Pamela? She's right there, and she is at Pennington and Mandela, okay? Shakor, Ms. Shakor, Ms. Shakor. Grimes School and Denzel Washington School. And I really love these ladies. They do work hard. And then we have, let me go back to Ms. Aline, Ms. Dent-Aline. She's new to our team. And let me see, Dardane is new to our team as well. Shakor is also new to our team. And Ms. Belfour, come on up. She's new to our team, and she's at Mount Vernon High School and Trappagan. And the newest member of her team, because, you know, as soon as we train them and they become great people, the community and the organizations in the community just snatch them up. We lost two to City Hall in one sitting, because we trained them so well. So the newest addition to our team is Ms. Shiba Greenwood.
She had a family emergency.
I was just told she had a family emergency, you know, again, doing family stuff. So she's out. And Ms. Veronica Graham. Mount Vernon High School and Graham School. And minus Ms. Shiba, who had to leave, she was here earlier. These are the members of the A Team. Better yet, I want to say, we are the members of the A Team. Okay? We do good work, we do hard work together, and I'm going to leave from the podium and let them speak.
Oh, no, sorry. Next slide, please. That was my slide, too. Please, stay at it. Please, it's seven seconds.
I'm a parent liaison. Of course, my trunk is full of event planning items for school.
I am a parent liaison. Of course, I carry my office everywhere.
I'm a parent liaison. Of course, I put my heart into the job.
I'm a parent liaison. Of course, my phone rings all the time.
I'm a parent liaison. Of course, I'm trying to be in two buildings at once. Hello?
I'm a parent liaison. Of course, I need a cart to carry all my stuff.
I'm a parent liaison, so you know I'm all about parent engagement.
Of course, I'm a parent liaison from the Parent Resource Center, and I give out lots of resource information. Good afternoon. Hi, how are you?
I'm a parent liaison. Of course, I speak many languages. From Ramajitve, seeing you in here.
Next slide, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Athena Dent-Aline. I am the parent liaison for the Parent Resource Center located at Mount Vernon STEAM Academy. So I just want to give you what our day is in the day in the life of a parent liaison. We do a lot of family outreach, which includes respond to emails, calls, and/or texts from families, ensure information is distributed to families regarding school and district events, serve as a liaison with school staff when necessary, connecting parents with resources to help with. We also serve as a home-school connection, assisting parents in navigating school technology, systems, questions, Schoology, and Infinite Campus. We assist with translation during parent meetings, because we have a lot of parents that do not speak English. We greet and direct parents and families at events. Connecting to resources. We offer educational resources to parents of high school students such as college information, scholarship, financial aid, and job training. We establish relationships with various community agencies, colleges, and local businesses. And lastly, we provide support. We attend school staff meetings, parent-teacher conferences, and parent meetings. We attend and assist with the PTA with planning school events, attend general meetings, and attend the PTA council meetings. And lastly, we develop, plan, and assist with family engagement events. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to turn over the microphone to my colleague, Elizabeth Smith. Thank you.
Next, we're going to delve into the five practice conditions of effective family-school partnerships. Little bit of background, and this is really known as why we do what we do the way we do it in the district. So our team follows the research of, sorry, the research-based family engagement practices developed by Dr. Karen Map, who's a senior lecturer on education at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and she's also the faculty director of the Education Policy and Management Master's Program. Sorry. According to Dr. Map, family engagement research has found that family-school partnerships are most effective when the family engagement initiatives of a school district follow certain conditions. One, they're linked to learning. Two, they're relational. Three, developmental. Four, collective and collaborative. Five, interactive. So the first one, linked to learning. What that basically means is what we do as parent liaisons is aligned with school and district achievement goals.
Next slide, please. Our work is, our work connects families to the teaching and learning of goals for students. And just as an example, you see here are a photo of one of our Math Night events. This one is at Grimes School, and you see students and their parents working together on math-based learning. I think these students may be doing origami, which is linked to geometry. There's other games and activities at the math nights and the ELA nights, and these all connect to what the students are doing in the classroom. Next slide, please. The next one is relational. Our work is relational. We assist the school district with building trusting relationships between the home and schools. How do we do this? We do this through communication. In addition to being responsive to parent inquiries and requests, we also can provide translation skills to support families in communicating with various people in our school buildings. We also perform outreach. We keep families informed of upcoming events around the district and in their school buildings, make sure to the best of our ability that parents know what's going on, when it's going on, and where it's going on. Next slide, please. Here's some photos of our team with people around the district, staff and families that we work with very closely day to day. Next slide, please. Developmental. Our work is focused on encouraging and empowering participants to be active, knowledgeable, and informed stakeholders in their schools and neighborhoods. What does this mean? Well, we provide a lot of information. We invite parents through phone banks and phone trees. We call parents directly and invite them to events, such as the recent CTE Showcase Night at the high school. And we're working now to get the word out about the high school showcase night and Parent Involvement Day. We also plan events that are connected, that connect parents with important resources and information. Here you see a picture of the community group tables out at Fall Festival from November of 2023, and the parents in our district who attended the event had an opportunity to meet with groups face to face and discuss things such as breast cancer awareness, how to get affordable health insurance, how to register their Girls for Girl Scouts. Next slide, please. Our work is also collective and collaborative. We bring groups of parents and families together at parent liaison events and workshops. We work together, we talk together, we learn together. We're constantly connecting families with each other, with our school buildings, and with community resources and community partners. And examples are participating in the Mount Vernon City School District Family and Community Engagement Committee, our movie nights and game nights, and other family engagement events with the PTA. We also sit on the Parent Involvement Day Planning Committees with administrators, faculty, staff, parent-teacher associations, and the Mount Vernon Parent and Community Forum on Education and Parents. Next slide, please. So the best example probably of the collective and collaborative work we do is Parent Involvement Day. We're working with people around the district. This is on a building-by-building basis, and it's also a district-wide initiative. This program is wrapped around family engagement. We invite our parents to come out Monday, February 12th of 2024, to the schools of their children, see what happens during the day, meet staff and faculty, and speak with other parents, and really build community. Next, please. Last but not least, our work is interactive. So by interactive, we mean that it's hands-on. At our math nights, our ELA nights, parents and students are dealing with literacy activities. They're playing Boggle, they're playing Scrabble, which builds into vocabulary and spelling. At math night, they do tangrams, which again is another geometry-based, there are fraction games. And the kids have a chance to work with their parents to solve the problems. They also walk away with what we call takeaways. So there will be literature that's linked to the curriculum for parents, also tips on how to continue the learning at home. And the students will have puzzles or activity sheets that are fun, bringing the fun back to learning and making it not just educational, but also fun and engaging for the parents. Next slide, please. And here you see the parents and the kids doing hands-on activities. The picture to the far left is of our Mindful Mornings, which was Mindful Mornings with Mom. That was a family engagement program where parent moms came in and they learned about mindfulness practices such as tapping, yoga, affirmations, and they had the chance to practice them here in the workshop. Next slide, please. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Dent-Aline.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you so much. So I just want to share with you my experience being at the Parent Resource Center. For me, I have to say, it's not a job. This is lifelong work that I've done, and I just want to thank the faculty for placing me in this position to be in a place where I can empower parents and their children. So the PRC is located at the Mount Vernon STEAM Academy, and it's a home-based resource center for parents, guardians, and families to seek support and assistance in the education of their children. The goals are improving academic achievement, social and emotional wellness, and other resources for the students and families of the Mount Vernon City School District. Next slide, please. So when you come in the Parent Resource Center, it's a place where there are solutions and resources. For parents, it's not just about coming into a room and giving out flyers. If you want to go back to school, I have information from various colleges. I have information if you want to go to culinary school, or if you want to take hospitality training. If a parent is looking for counseling, if they're having issues with housing insecurity or food insecurity, everything is located in my room. And even for the students, my door is open every day. Students come into my room, they ask me about job employment, they just turned 14, job training. You have some kids that want to go to college, but you have others, they're looking to go into a trade. So I sit with them, and I give them worthwhile information and connect them with resources. And also, what is also available in the resource room, as I mentioned, I assist with food and homes insecurities by linking parents up with the Department of Social Services and local food pantries. I provide information on how to deal with ADD, ADHD, and how to seek services for special education needs. And this is very personal for me because I am a mother of a child with autism. He's 25 years old, and I'm also in a community advocate in Westchester County. I help parents advocate and I educate them on how to be the cheerleader for their children. I also assist with building resumes, interview preparation, and cover letters to gain future employment. So it's not just about knowing what you want to do, but how to present yourself in the best way possible. So you have a lot of parents, housewives, they want to go back to work, their children are grown, they're out of the house, they want to make themselves useful to society. So that's what my center is for. I come in, I teach them how to build their resume, how to construct it, I'll teach them how to dress for an interview, but also your demeanor. Don't go in there feeling defeated, going there knowing that you will hopefully get a job. I provide information on crisis prevention, what to do and what to call. From my experience as a social worker for 10 years, I understand what it is when you hit a wall. So when parents come in my room and they're dealing with a certain situation, I'm hoping that I can connect them with the right services so that they can deal with and find solution. I assist with preparation for the next steps after high school, whether it be college, vocational, or technical trade schools. And lastly, we offer parent workshops on a variety of topics. I just recently did a workshop, this, earlier part of this, which was a couple of weeks ago, it was called Parental Pampering. And basically, it's about self-care for parents. Parents are on roller skates every day. They're taking care of everybody else except themselves. So this will be a once-a-month workshop, it will be for the rest of the school term, and I'm really hoping that parents... and I'm really hoping that parents will take advantage of it. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dardane Prilukai, and I'm the parent liaison for Mount Vernon Steam Academy and Parker School. These are some family, community, upcoming engagement events. February 1st, we have Parental Pampering Parent Workshop Number Two. February 8th, we have Mount Vernon Leadership Academy Family Literacy Night. February 12th, we have Parent Involvement Day District-wide. February 29th, we have Parker Family Math Night. March 6th, we have Pennington Family Literacy Night. March 14th, we have Financial Literacy Night, Managing the Piece of Pie. April 11th, Autism Awareness Workshop. April 25th, Parental Pampering Workshop Number Three. May, Spring and Fall Wellness Fair. May 23rd, we have Parent Pampering Workshop Number Four. And June 6th, we have College Workshop for Parents. Thank you.
So this is just a collage of pictures showing all of our parent liaisons and community work, interacting with our parents, our childrens, our families, doing various events throughout the entire year. We work hard, these ladies work hard, but they love what they do because it's all about spreading love, enrichment to the communities, and preparing our children for the future. Next slide, please. So here is a, you know what? Okay, how's that? Okay. So here's one event that took place, one district, one school, one family, every child. So again, one of the things that the parent liaisons, they're always connecting with the staff at the school, they're always engaging in whatever is going on at each of their schools. It's very, very important that we do that so people can get to know who we are and what we do. Next slide, please.
We're the Mount Vernon City School District Parent Liaison Team, and we are getting on the bus.
Hello. Oh, sorry. Hi, everyone. I'm Shakira Northlead. I'm at Grimes in Denzel, Washington. So a part of, we like to make learning fun and try to get the parents involved, and now we're going to get you guys involved. So tomorrow is National Compliment Day, so I'm here to share a little something for you guys, and if you want to give us a compliment too, that's all right, too. Part of it, as well as you tear them off and you give a compliment to someone. And it's quite a few of them, so it's a lot of compliments to give.
Well, we just want to say thank you to all of you who are here this evening. Thank you for obliging us and allowing us to just introduce ourselves. You know most of the ladies here, and we thank you for welcoming us newbies into the Mount Vernon City School District. And we just look forward to just continuing to share all that we are and all that we do for the Mount Vernon City School District. Thank you very, very much.
Yes. Thank you so very much. We truly appreciate the parent liaisons. We've had so many successful events as a result, and we can always rely on the parent liaisons to get the community together, get parents together. We thank you so very much for what you've done. And as a result, we will speak to you real soon about an issue that you wanted us to address, and we'll talk about that very shortly. Thank you, Dr. Jones, so very much for all that you've done. Do we have any questions, Board Trustees?
No questions, but thank you for the jobs that you do in the schools, representing our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I've been a, I always shout out parent liaisons every chance I get, so to our new people, welcome so much. Thank you so much for all that you do. You are the heroes that we don't always hear about, but you are still heroes regardless, so you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that ends the superintendent report. Thank you.
Can we go right on to committee reports? So we get right into the committee reports. Trustee Gale?
Our next meeting will be Thursday of this week.
Meeting for what, sir?
Family and Community Engagement.
Thank you. All right, trustee Middleton?
I'd just like to start off with a quote, and the quote says by Audrey Kathleen Hepburn, a British actress, it says, "Nothing is impossible." The word itself simply has a great message in it that says, "I'm possible." And so I want to say that Thursday will be our family and community meeting. I'm looking forward to it. You guys did an awesome, excellent, outstanding job. I love being on the Family and Community Committee, and Dr. Jones did a good job, so I'm looking forward to that. And I also want to say kudos to those team members who did put on the talent and fashion show that I attended. It was awesome, it was great, it was fun. And just watching Michael Jackson and all the rest of the kids from the schools performing, it was just awesome. So I just want to say kudos. I'm so happy to have heard from Dr. Doggett and Dr. Jones, Dr. Doggett with your presentation tonight, to get up off the ones and to just get up off the ground is progress. So we ought to continue to think big. As Edmund Kahn says, "Start small," and we want to build deep. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Justice Jenga?
Okay, I don't really have a long report. I was also at the fashion show on Friday, and it was a good time. Also, too, we had a policy meeting the other night, and I am going to pass it over to Dr. So our policy committee has done some amazing work. Last year's goal was to ensure that we had 150 policies done, so we met those goals. The last time the Mount Vernon City School District policies were updated was in 2006. So currently, we are on track, we are able to keep up with any updates, we are on target. We have three amazing policies that are going to be read because the policy committee is about doing the Mount Vernon City School District's business. So we are focusing on our grant purchasing, responding to the state, we are ensuring that all our stakeholders are accountable. So if anybody is welcome to join our meeting, they're long, but very rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Justice Sanders?
I also was on the policy meeting. I don't have any other committee reports at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lindsey?
Not so much a committee report, because I haven't had a meeting, but I did speak with the Director of Security and run over a few things, just the highlights of what's going on with security. Just so everybody knows, we're at 106 monitors, of which 97 are full-time, nine are per diems. We also just had the business office approve the new vendor because we've been trying to get new radios for some of the people so that we can increase the safety within the district. And finally, this is just my own thing I wanted to throw in, because he, the security director, Carpador, actually, they moved his office so they can give the guys and gals who are monitors a break room, which I think is not only good for the district, but I've known Carpador for a long time, and I think it's a reflection of his personality. That's it, that's my report.
Thank you. Justice Mitchell?
I just got, now I'm nervous.
Okay, we can have a team, team report?
Yeah, I'm going to pass off at certain points. So I recently toured the updates to the turf room at the high school. I saw where we stood with the painting. I know that we've made great bounds, and thank you. We had someone speak this evening, spoke to who, how we did all of that work internally as far as the painting, and where we stand, the turf floor is getting ready to be put in. I think it's in the process this week. I'm gonna ask, give a thumbs up, okay? Thank you, Mr. Ray Monday. So I went and I toured, it's come along a great way, because I was there to see it when it was at its worst several, about a couple, about a year or so back. So that's one thing. I was also at the fashion show at the high school, it was, I'm sorry, the fashion and talent show at the high school. It was absolutely amazing. There were so many students, and I'm talking all grade levels, there's so much talent, the kids looked great. The fashion show was very creative, it was very well thought out, great planning on behalf of the folks involved. I also had a meeting last week with Coach Semino regarding the sports that are in our district, and I talked about it last time, but we were talking about how we utilize our buildings that we have for the teams that we have, because there's only a small handful of buildings that have adequate, what the kids need to actually do their practices. For instance, cheerleading is a real sport now, so when that turf room is done, that's going to most likely be the place where they practice. So that's a win across the board. Now, and I also noted in regards to sports, Lady Knight's flag football is about to begin, so keep your eyes and ears peeled for that, that's coming up. I'm going to only speak quickly about the cake, the race structure really quick. That really is a buildings and ground type of conversation. And my honest opinion is that I think it was a great idea, I just think that it needed much more revisiting and restructuring to ensure the separation that was needed. I think that me, myself, as a parent with children right now in the district, that's my biggest thing, just the separation between having the young kids, having true separation from the upperclassmen. We're here again on Black History Month, okay? And I'm saying, I guess it's a bit of a challenge. There's so many people that we can discuss. I was listening to a parent from one of our buildings say that they don't see, there's so much more people that were important to Black history. I want to see invitations come out to trustees, having us come through and come see some incredible presentations. I know Mandela Zalakoff for one year had a living wax museum, and it was nothing but Black inventors. I learned so much from these children at this walkthrough, and it was amazing. I want to see that this year. We need to move, we know about Martin Luther King, we know about Harriet Tubman, but what do we know about James Baldwin? What do we know about the other people involved in our Black history that are incredibly important but not spoke about enough? We know about Michael Jackson, we know about Michael Jordan, they're great. What about John Singleton? What about John Lewis and Stokely Carmichael? What about Malcolm X? What about these people who also were major parts in Black history? I would love to see a robust district-wide agenda where our building leads put something really beautiful together, whether it's collectively as a district or at the building levels, and send some advice out to trustees. I'd love to come attend some stuff and just to see what the kids can do and what you've learned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Roger White for the Facilities Committee. I first like to thank Mike and Matt for chairing, for not chairing this, but for doing all the hard work that has been done in this district. A lot of work is in-house from committees and that he has worked on, also to Mark Ramondi for looking out overall on everything that's going on in our district. All elevators inspections have been done. We got a new vendor, the pull-down gate inspections at Columbus and Graham. What is that?
Pull-down gates.
A pull-down gate, is that for the fire?
So those are kitchen grates.
Oh.
What do those kitchen grates do again?
Kitchen grates. I didn't know what they were.
Kitchen grate, all right. But it's just a way to secure that area.
Okay.
So they're being addressed by the company this week.
Thank you. Radiator covers for Parker School has been done. All this is in-house. Remember, we're saving lots and lots of money here. What else? I'm not reading this whole report. Repair, the fire alarms at Hamilton has been repaired, the fire alarm at Rebecca Turner has been repaired. What else do we have here? The fire alarm at Denzel's Washington has also been repaired, and they have located three panels on three floors, and new batteries have been installed. I just commend the district.
This, Mike, Matt, I'm Mike and Mark, thank you so much. This is incredibly important.
For us, and very helpful for the district. So continue to work with us to make our district better and better and better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Justice Kelly?
The education committee didn't meet, but Dr. Doggett presented, we didn't meet, we haven't met since. Okay, okay. You're looking at me a little confused. We will be meeting to discuss the results of the state's results in the district. But I want to give a shout-out. I went to the CTE, I guess it has a tour at Mount Vernon High School, and it was interesting because there was also, the College and Career Center had these students present their college essays, which essays are going to be very important now that affirmative action has been taken away. So students get into college, this is going to be an important part of their experience, and I wanted to give a shout-out to Christian Campbell, Eurya Kern, Adriana Howlett, Jeri Matadeen, Alan Salazar, Krista Lee Buddha, Kimora Jefferson Smith, and Karen Ramsey. They are our future, and I understand Dr. Doggett had an opportunity to talk to some of these students for the college essay, the night of the CTE tour. Okay. Don't worry, it's a lot going on. It's a lot going on. And Jones also, well, he was comparing, I guess, the physique, the health, because there was, but I wanted to give a shout-out to those students. They're amazing, their stories were amazing, and it was very brave of them to share, and I really appreciated that. And I also learned that the LifeSkill students are doing a laundry service, which was so empowering.
Great.
I think, yeah, I would like to hear more about some of the programs that, I'd like to do it at the board meeting so our community would know also. Thank you.
Yes, sir, yes. College essay, yes, yes, very, thank you, thank you.
Dr. Doggett was thinking about the numbers for the ELA and the MAP. Okay, that's it, I don't have any policy, I'm sorry, budget report. And I myself, I am also on the policy committee, and I tell you, we are working really, really hard to get the district in compliance with all our policies, and we are doing a good job. I want to thank Royce Russell, our internal attorney, and Dr. Doggett for, please, for thanking you guys for putting up with us. I know we have a lot of, and Dr. Gavatton, yes, I did say Dr. Gavatton. Oh, Doggett, again? Dr. Gavatton, thank you so much.
You need to thank the whole cabinet.
Yes, that's true. Just thank everyone, thank the whole cabinet. Everybody has been working really, really, really hard, especially building and ground facilities. I know I drive and I keep saying we need quality- I know I drive and I keep saying we need quality control and quality measures, and you guys are really putting that into place for the district, so I really wanna thank each and every one of you very much. And that concludes our committee report. Thank you.
Do we have any old business?
I, I wanna ask about the two things, the cameras and the SROs.
Cameras for the district?
Yeah, what's the status of the cameras and the status of the SROs? Anybody got any updates on anything?
So what, you have the cameras, okay.
Good afternoon again, everyone. So we are about to launch Phase Two, five more buildings of the camera installation that's, actually today has been signed off and ready to begin as soon as possible for the cameras.
So what buildings, Phase Two?
Just five buildings, I don't remember all of them, I don't remember, who is it? Do you have those colors? Thank you.
And could you tell us the cost?
Carlos has got good news on.
Carlos.
Good evening, everybody, good evening, all authorities. I'm happy to report that we have plans to start implementing security cameras in five more buildings, thanks to the support from the board and the leadership. The five buildings are, three buildings that didn't have any security cameras in place for all this time. And I wanna tell you, it's Hamilton School. Mount Vernon Leadership Academy. And we have Hamilton Homes and Homes Honor Academy, Mount Vernon Honor Academy. So those are the three buildings. We're going to replace and upgrade Benjamin Turner School, and the last one, I believe, is another round with Grant's School. So those are the schools that are gonna be in the next round. We're gonna start with the three schools that don't have any security cameras, because that's a priority for the district. No, Trapeza is done, Trapeza is done, we did it on the first round.
So how long will that take?
We are planning to get this done by June 30th. It might go into the summer, because there's new wiring that needs to be done. Remember, there's no security systems, so we need to start from scratch, and those upgrades that are going to the other buildings will take time, because we're replacing everything that isn't there. The cost is less than a million dollars, it's a nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and that includes the wiring. We worked on this deal for about, this is now the second month. I want to thank also Dr. Jones and Mr. Ray Monday, who support these negotiations with the vendor, and we finally got the, you know, the comparable quotes, we got everything in place, and we're going for the next phase right now, and securing the funding from grants, that we still have remaining funds from the type of COVID. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, that's good news, thank you so much. Oh, SROs, who would have updates on SRO, the superintendent?
Mr. Lency, you know anything about SROs?
So I spoke to DC Lackert, she informed me that they're still looking at their agreement to make some revisions. I spoke to her the week before last, so we're waiting to hear from her in that regard.
Did she mention that we're gonna get that between now and June, or is it for September?
No, because she said January.
Yeah, it was supposed to be in January when we had meetings. It's sad to say that during our conversation, she said it looks more like September.
September?
Yes.
So, so.
Yes.
September 2024.
September 2024.
Since it doesn't look like we may be getting them from the city, is. So is there another plan to get SROs? Can we go to the county, back to the county?
I think that we should discuss that in executive session.
Let's discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you. That really concludes the committee report.
Just had to get it out there.
Okay, we're gonna go on to our resolutions.
Yeah, let's go.
It's good.
Okay. Can I have a motion for? We ready? Can I have a motion for 5.1, Human Resources 98A certified?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 98B classified?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries.
I would like to congratulate, congratulate Tasha Best, she'll be a school psychologist for the district. Tasha, you could stand so we could see you. Thank you.
Can I have a motion for 6.1, adoption of the 2024-2025 school calendar?
Motion.
Second.
Can I? I'm sorry, can we do that again? Can I have a motion for 6.1, adoption of the 2024-2025 school calendar?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.1, approval of Student Services, Pupil Personnel Services, memorandum number 12 dated January 23rd, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we just get a little explanation of Dr. Gaberton?
So the first one is our regular acceptance of CSE meeting, IEPs. The second one is, so one of the thing that I've, I get every day, I get these giant packets and invoices from companies who are charging us a large amount of money, and usually I ask to see the students, are they going, are they there, what are they doing for us? So number two, I saw a bill that says we're paying seventy-nine dollars an hour for a service, but we're also paying one nineteen for something else, and I couldn't understand what was the difference. So I asked for a Zoom meeting, and the explanation is, oh, we raised the price, but we didn't change the contract, so you're not supposed to raise the price, since we didn't change the contract. So we decided we're going to create a RFP, shop around, and we got somebody cheaper, so we're saying goodbye. Number three, some of the things we realized, we have no procedures, no manuals. One thing we discovered, if a student did not get accepted for an IEP, some of our staff would make the child a five or four, and we're giving away not accommodations according to the law, but services. We're giving away counseling, OT, PT, I'm not paying for that. So we need a manual to help our staff know the difference between services and accommodation.
That the task force?
Yes. Our staff also need manuals on how to do procedures, what the law says when it comes to special education student when they're suspended, what they are entitled to. We've held several meetings to educate our staff of the expectation, however, we felt that we needed a manual that would have the district logo, that would represent to the board, that would make part of our administrative policies. My goal, at least, with Student Services is to save money, and that's one of the way. If people know what is their expectation, they cannot say that they did not know. So that's the reason for that one, number three.
Can I ask a question about the task force? How does this, how do they work with the compliance officer that we just hired?
So Dr. Ramsey will be in charge of, so we have meetings where we see issues. She's in charge of directing those members of the task force to create best practices and policies, not just what we feel works for our district and our population, but what other district are doing. For example, Ms. McKinney-Bronley go to the bossy PPS meeting with all the other directors, and we bring some of that here to our district. What are some of the things that they are doing that we could implement? Her and Dr. Kelly, Ramsey meet, we discuss, and we implement. And the other thing that we do is what Judy Elliott is asking us, how do we fit those needs into the compliance? Up until Dr. Ramsey came, one of the biggest issues we had were IEPs were a mess, and that ruined our data. So when we upload our state data, we'd have hundreds upon hundreds of errors. So one of her tasks is to fix it and to teach our school psychologist, our supervisor, how to end an IEP correctly. So we do get funding back from the state, it's done correctly, and that student is exited properly. So her task is going to manage these three people to create these manuals and procedures for the district.
And do we have staff in the classroom? Because I understand that TAs are being taken out of classrooms to teach classes, so I'm trying to understand how we're in compliance with this report from the state if this is happening.
So one of the things we are doing, so I'll get, for example, I was asked by a building, can we use social workers to do, to do a PLC? And I said no. And the reason I said no is, they have to put in the IEP why they didn't give the services, which then causes to owe compensatory services. So we are striving to try to find more TAs to ensure TAs are not acting as teachers, and that we are being compliant. All our buildings that were not, we got, made sure, we put documentation to the state, so the state know this is the only year, and we are striving to ensure we are compliant. I know Ms. McKinney-Bronley spoke to Mr. Campbell, maybe we should be hiring our special education from the district and fanning them out to the building, so we make sure every building is staffed. So we are diligently working on that. We also creating partnership. The next tab you're going to hopefully vote on is to help us make sure we are compliant.
Will we have update meetings on where we stand as we move towards compliance, like benchmarks to say, here we are, here was, here's where we were? When should we expect those to be presented to the trustees?
So tomorrow morning, I will meet with the other two ladies, and we'll set up our first meeting the following week, so we could do that.
Okay.
In addition, there was a point where the compliance, we were supposed to have a handbook on the website for special education, is that there?
That's what we're working on. We have not had one in many, we have not had one in many years, so we're working on compiling all the documentation to ensure that whatever we put on the website is correct. Also, the other thing we've done to the website is cleaned it up. We had a document that told people they could just walk in and ask for services. We are following the letter of the law, we cleaned it up. So we have cleaned the special education portion of our website, and I try, I strive weekly to try to update. If it's not on this, when you go on the PPS, if it's not on the special education tab, it's in the parent's right tab, and you will notice we added the FERPA form, we added additional form. The other things we are doing is, things are gonna be standardized, one district, sixteen building, but one district, that's the goal we are working toward.
Right, because I've heard complaints from parents who say it's very unprofessional the way they're handled when they come in for needs, and that's not, has nothing to do with parent coordinators, that has to do with talking to the staff about IEPs. So are we addressing those issues also?
Yes, ma'am, we are. So PPS has a policy, we have the ten-minute rule, no parent should be waiting no more than ten minutes before they speak to someone. Every single person in PPS must answer the phone, I don't care what's your title, who you are, you must answer the phone in PPS. We speak with parents with respect, and we do not turn parent away, because we don't know if people are taking days off to come to the office. So I am a bit bossy, I freely admit, and I do expect that, you know, Student Services will function in a way that is to the advantage. We've made a lot of changes, you will hear complaint not only from parents, but from psychologists, social workers, because we are asking them to do things the correct way. We are. Like, for example, we are not giving the store away with five or fours, we are not, it's only for accommodation.
We bring in programming back in, Dr. Gaberton?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we discharged three students this week, we found were not going to their school, added district, so they're coming back.
Yeah. That is something, I think, you know, the more programs, the better in districts, so you are actively.
Yes, we are, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.2, authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding with Mercy University and the Mount Vernon City School District?
Motion.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Did we already not enter in an agreement with Mercy? I'm confused.
This one is very different.
Well, could you explain the difference?
So one of the issues we noticed, so when I went downstairs to PPS, we recreate our services. Basically, we wanna know who had compulsory service, who did we owe? No one could answer, so I tasked Dana Gardner and Joanne Cologne to redo the chart, speak to our services, what services do we owe, who do we owe it to, and how much time? So we realized we do not have enough people to provide OT, and that's a lot of money. It so happened, I was in a conversation with Dr. Cynthia Wally, and while I was speaking to her, Dr. Morehead, who's the head of the OT department in Mercy, she said they would love to partner with a school where they would provide, they would pay for a supervisor to come to the school and supervise intern. And I raised my hand that I would love to do that. So this partnership will give us a clinician to stay here, they will supervise three OT interns to go to our school, where we have, at Pennington, where we have a large number of our autism student, Rebecca Turner, and we'll see how it goes, there's an evaluation. Mr. Russell looked at the contract, we had a lot of back and forth, and then we'll go to expand. If it works, then we'll move to PT and speech. And any other colleges listening who wanna partner, give us free services, no money, because we broke, please call us. So this is what, this is a very different memorandum of understanding, and our students are going to benefit, because the interns will be going to provide OT in their classroom.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, approved general funds transfers 2023 to 2024 dated January 23rd, 2024?
Motion. Question.
Okay, questions, concerns, discussions?
I think I'm letting Mr. Silver on the mic.
Yes, so Mr. Silver, we're moving over a half a million dollars across several accounts that relate to substitute teachers, retirement, and we're moving them all over to hardware ECF funding, contracted services legal, and contracted, this is what my question is, we presented the people with a budget and they voted on it May of last year. What this looks like, when you're talking about shifting half a million dollars and we're only in first quarter of Q of this year, that screams to me, as just a regular guy who's not that smart, we obviously presented a budget that was over, that was over-budgeted and truly must not have been anywhere near what we should have expected. And before you expect me to say okay to all of this, I need to understand what is hardware's ECF funding, and then what, why, why do we under, why did we over-budget for these things? How are we taking money from retirement and substitute teachers when we're short on, on substitute teachers nationwide? But how are we moving this money around like this? Why?
So we can go through the various codes, and you can understand what we did.
So we can go through the various codes, and you can understand what we did. One of the codes we had was a K3 code, which, um, which we took, uh, which we took $100,000 from, leaving $400,000 in the code for K3, uh, teachers district-wide. When all of the K3 teachers are budgeted in their building levels, this money becomes available to use for other things. And I would say something with regard to a budget. It is a spending plan. We never had any intention of, of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on repairs of playgrounds, of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on electrical repairs. We didn't know these things would happen. And so we have to transfer money from one place to another, from our spending plan, to try to accommodate needs that, for life safety. And this, this funding, this hardware funding under ECF is, is one of the things that we are required to do, having to do with federal government money. So everything where there was a transfer was a place where there was available money. And I would point out to you that we have spent so much on repairs that there just isn't available money in the repair codes to make these changes. So we are, we are looking every day to find places to get money to move money. And I'll point out to you that this is the third quarter, not the second, not the first quarter, third quarter of the, of the fiscal school year. So every one of these was well thought out. Every one of these was, was in conjunction with other people out of my department, out of my area of responsibility, to make sure that we were doing the best thing for the kids. That's always the best thing. And this, that's what this is. This provides us with additional, uh, technology funding. And this provides us with repairs that we need to do. And we have a great deal of expenses for legal expenses that we had not planned, uh, for various lawsuits that we have, or settlements that we have, sursheraries that we have, without having money for it. And so we're doing the best we can to move the money around, sir.
So I also have a, oh, sorry, also have a question. Um, we are moving money from employee retirement.
Yes, we, we have two and a half million dollars in that code. And the, the retirement expense, we anticipate that the 2.4 million instead of 2.5 million will be sufficient for this year.
But we're also offering, and I remember last, um, my, our last general meeting, I, we proposed that we are going to have a retirement incentive.
Correct.
So if we are having retirement incentive, let me, let me just finish my thoughts. If we're having a retirement incentive, why are we moving money from the retirement, um, code on the budget?
These are unrelated. The, the, the retirement incentive would be from the TRS, having to do with teachers. This is not the teacher retirement code. This is the employee retirement code, meaning everybody but the teaching staff. And the, the expense that we pay the retirement system has nothing to do with a retirement incentive that we might be offering. A retirement incentive would be budgeted money in next year's budget to pay whatever dollar the board agreed to for people to retire early. And in return for that, we will save about a million dollars in next year's budget. That has no bearing on this year's budget, and that code is not related to retirement incentive that we are proposing.
Also, we are in negotiation with the teachers' union. And I see that we are moving money, um, 200, $200,000 from the teacher's salary, substitute teacher's salary. Uh, we in negotiation. Why are we moving money from?
We have, uh, a large, we, we have an excess of money in some of the teaching codes, in part because we have not filled positions. Those positions will still be budgeted next year. But I have very carefully made sure, as I always have, that we have sufficient money for any increase in salaries or any retro payment that we have to make to the teaching staff. I don't think we should talk about this particular subject further, I mean, the, um, negotiations.
Can I ask a question about, what is the ECF? What is the Emergency Connectivity Fund? What does it deal with?
Um, Carlos, you want to take that?
Hello again. Hello again. So the ECF is the Emergency Connectivity Fund. These are funds originated by the federal aid. They came to the district as part of those COVID funding that we receive, and is dedicated to provide for devices for the students. At that time, when we were awarded, I believe the amount that was awarded for the district is $940,000, we use those funds every subsequent year to provide for devices for our students. As you may know, we are starting right now computer-based testing. So there is about 1,500 devices that need to be replaced district-wide. Base, they are still operational, but these are devices that were purchased three, four years ago. So they are coming very fast to the time of end of life, end of support. And we want to be sure that we have enough devices to provide for the students. So those funds were available, and, and, and that's what the movement of these transfers is. Uh, I cannot explain that part, but the ECF fund goes back to that time of COVID, and was provided specifically for devices. That money cannot be used in anything else, and that money expires on June 30th, 2024.
So is that money grant? Are we talking about grant money?
It was a federal E-Rate grant.
So it's federal grant, but we're moving money from the budget to cover the grant?
Through the course of these school years, I believe the money was moved between different accounts. And now Mr. Silver is replenishing that funding into the right account under the Technology Department to provide for these devices.
The E-Rate becomes a part of the general fund budget. It's not, it's not, it's not paid separately to the grant funds.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
All those in favor? Oppose?
Oppose.
Okay. Okay, um, and Jenga, and you opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, so. Milton opposed. Warren opposed.
To the whole transfer funds, is what I'm understanding?
Mm-hmm. Everything is on it, yeah. Okay, so I have three people who are opposing?
I abstain.
You're not separating it. One, two, three. You're opposing the whole?
It's their entire, it's, it's, yeah, there's no, they're all under 8.1.
So we, can we table it and bring it back? Can we table it and bring it back forward?
Okay.
And then we separate it.
Have a motion? Have a motion to table 8.1. Approved general funds transfers 2023, 2024.
Motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries to poll 8.1. Have a motion for 8.2. Authorization to accept a corrective action plan from the 2022-2023 audit.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I have a question. These, uh, the correction plan that is before us, these correction plan from the audit, um, Mr. Silver, is this from the last audit?
This is from the, from the external audit that was submitted to the state on November 14th.
So this, this is the action plan for?
This is the required corrective action plan to the questions that they raised or the comments that they raised.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a motion for 8.3. Authorization to enter into a contract agreement with Naraqui Smith LLP as internal auditors.
Motion.
Second.
That was new standard? That, you, you second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.4. Authorization to enter into a contract agreement with Naraqui Smith LLP as business and payroll auditors.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1. Authorization, authorize an amendment to an agreement with consultant Sandra Mike?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.1. First reading of Policy Number 5705. Procurement Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards. Okay, uh, okay. Have a motion? Yeah, can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, we passed it already, yay. Questions, concerns, discussions? Okay.
Not to read it?
I don't have to read it, yay. Go ahead, Dr. Gabitana.
Okay, so some of the work we've been doing in the policy committee has been to ensure that we are being accountable to the grants we are receiving. So we created a new local policy, 5705. Procurement Uniform Grant and Guidance for Federal Award. So I'm only going to really read the highlight of this policy. So one of the things that the state asks us to do is to be compliant of federal law. So this policy says, "We establish and maintain effective internal control that provide reasonable assurance that the district is managing the federal award in compliance with federal statutes." Regulation and terms and condition of the federal awards. Internal control means a process implemented by the district designed to provide reasonable assurance regarding the achievement of objective in the following categories. Effectiveness and efficiency of operation. Reliability of reporting of internal and external use, and compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Mr. Russell in the committee, when we all met, decided we're going to add responsibilities to this. When, when it's voted, if it's voted upon, and you will notice it is there in red. Comply with federal statutes, regulation, and terms and condition of federal award, this responsibility will be managed by the purchasing agent. Evaluate and monitor the district compliance with statute, regulation, and determine condition of federal award. This responsibility will be managed by the policy committee. Take prompt action when instance of noncompliance or identify, including noncompliance identified and audit finding. This responsibility will be managed by the policy committee. Takes reasonable measure to safeguard, protect personally identifiable information and other information the federal awarding agency or pass-through entity designate as sensitive or the district consider sensitive, consistent with applicable federal, state, local, and tribal law regarding privacy and obligation of confidence. The responsibility will be managed by the record manager. Because we wanted to be compliant, we created a sub-job that is going to be someone's responsibility to ensure we are being compliant.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt. With the civil service, this has also been cleared with civil service?
No, so in this discussion, we looked at who is responsible for the money in the district. We have a purchasing agent who's responsible for making purchases. We have a treasurer who manages that fund. An assistant superintendent for business. These were the people we are, will be tasked with maintaining compliance with the grant. Because you're the one who buy the item, you pay the bill, so you're going to manage how we do it with compliance.
Quick, did I, did I miss, how, how are we paying this second job that we just?
There's no payment. It's free. It's part of their job duty.
Thank you.
No money.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Now, have a motion for 10.2. Authorization to waive the second reading for Policy 5705. Procurement Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards and immediately adopt.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.3. First reading of Policy Number 5673. Records Management. I.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? Okay.
So again, when we looked at all the issues we're having and all we needed to do, we realized we needed someone to manage our grant. So we created Policy 5673. The superintendent will designate a record management officer, here we refer as record manager, subject to board approval to develop and coordinate the district orderly and efficient record management program. The record manager will work with other district officials to develop and maintain this program. The retention and destruction of any record regarding purchasing, procurement, or grant record must be consulted with IT when necessary, legal counsel. The district may create a record advisory board to assist in establishing and supporting the record management program. Member of this board may include the grant liaison, if we have one, the budget analyst, the assistant superintendent of business, the purchasing agent, the superintendent or the superintendents designee. We also went as far as to put in retention of record. The district will ensure that record retention requirement incorporated into any program or plan or the process for design, redesign, or substantial enhance of information system that stored electronic records. The district will also ensure that electronic record are not render unusable because of changing technology before they are presented. So the issue is we needed to gather information for the state. We had to go everywhere to look for it. So as a policy committee, we decided that this information would live with one person. And they will be responsible for maintaining it, protecting it according to the law. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Now can I have a motion for 10.4? Authorization to waive the second reading for Policy 5673. Records Management and immediately adopt.
Motion. Second.
Motion. Second, third.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.5. First reading of Policy Number 5706. Fixed asset inventories, accounting, and tracking. A motion? Can I have a second? Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So now that we have a record manager, we want that person to know what they will be doing. The, the record manager basically will be doing, be, the purchasing agent and record manager or superintendent designee will maintain a continuous and accurate inventory of fixed asset owned by the district in accordance with applicable rule, standard procedures, and best practices. Fixed asset are generally long-term tangible resources intended to be continuously held or used, and may include land, building improvement, machinery, and equipment. All fixed asset purchased and received by the district will be checked, logged, stored to an established procedure, which the policy committee is in the process of creating, and will be a core policy to this one. The purchasing agent, record manager, and superintendent designee will account for asset semi-annually according to the applicable rules, standard procedures, and best practice. These records will serve to maintain an inventory of asset purchase. Establish full circle from shipping to receiving accountability. I repeat, establish full circle from shipping to receiving accountability. We want to know who bought it, who got it, and We want to know who bought it, who got it, and where it is. Ensure insurance coverage when appropriate. So the record manager will maintain a property record for each fixed asset. Where possible, the following information, date of acquisition, description, serial or other identification number, any funding source or percentage contributed by that source, vendor, cost of value, location and use, asset type, condition and estimated use for life, replacement cost, current value, savage value, sale price and date and method of disposition, and responsible official. And this is the new policy 5706.
So I have a question on that one.
Yes, ma'am.
When you, when you're talking about the records, where would these records reside once this person?
With the record manager. So if we buy a chair?
No, no, I'm saying for, for historical purposes, right? Now we're finally doing, I think, what should have been done. It's amazing to me that we're, have a policy now that we're doing it. But will it exist somewhere in the district that will always exist? Because I've heard about things being done and things disappearing, and there's no record. And so that's what I'm trying to say. Where will it exist?
So, Mr. Russell, and I have been working with Mr. Carlos, we may as to figure out, is there an electronic way of us tracking it? Currently, technology uses, uh, a very easy tracking system we like, but we, you know, for their computers. However, we, you know, if you notice, all your computers have tags that can be tracked. But we want to be able to do that for a piece of furniture, for weight that we buy, anything we buy. Uh, when the state came, her suggestion is, if, even if it's worth a penny, if the district bought it with taxpayers' money, federal money, we should track it. So we are looking at any software we could use, any method we could use. Uh, Dr. Cicero also used one with her ENL grant that we thought might be good one to use, but we want to make sure we have it, and we want, by law, we're supposed to keep it for seven years, and we want to make sure that we'll always have it.
Right, so I understand that a lot of stuff is delivered to like Mount Vernon High School, and somebody has to sign for it. How do we preserve those records? How do we make sure that, because they're different shifts, and it seems, you know, I understand that they're busy, but is there somebody who'll be receiving and making sure that then it's entered into a system?
So we've been discussing maybe of having a central receiving and shipping out. We're exploring that. If it comes to central office, it is tag, it is ship. We're also looking into changing how things or how our vendors are just delivering things and not really getting signature. We are going to be insisting that if you say you deliver it, we don't have a live signature, we didn't, maybe you don't get paid because we really didn't get it. So we are exploring all these different methods.
It is, yeah, it's a combination of one, first having the policy, integrating it with software, and then having it have a life of its own by it living on a server, one person responsible, but once it's on the server, we know that everyone can get it, right? To, speaking to receiving items and signing, as it currently is, now, some of the vendors are so used to just having the school forge or just put down our purchase agent name, and that's it, and then they receive the item. So we're very conscious of tagging it to payment. So the right person has to sign, the right person doesn't sign, and we don't have verification, at least right at the moment. If the wrong person signed and wants to stand up and say, all right, we do have it, then we know that it's there, right? Because sometimes the vendors may not know that that person's not in, there's always exceptions, right? This is very fluid. This is, is not, is not fixed, it is flexible to a degree, parameters around it. So, um, there'll probably be some hiccups before it's smooth sailing, but you have to have something in place before you can get there. And so, you know, I'm big on protocol, so let's keep it going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavah motion for 10 point six, authorization to waive the second reading for policy 5706, fixed asset inventories, accounting, and tracking, and immediately adopt.
Motion.
Who was that, Injenga? Uh, Warren, that was. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavah motion for 11 point one, authorization to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to their appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter.
Second.
Doing all that tonight?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Um, I would need the following people, Dr. Gabatun, Mr. Ramandi, and Mr. Silver.
So we are coming back? So we are coming back?
We'll come back on eight point one.
Are you going to congratulate Sandra?
No, it's a consultant.
Um, I just want to congratulate Sandra Mike for, um, her becoming our full-time consultant. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out.
I just want to say that we will be coming back, um, after executive session, so thank you again. Thank you.